It is April 4th, 2022, 5:30 PM. And I'd like to call this work session to order. Our first topic on the agenda is a city update. So do we have Ms. Solano?
Good evening, Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Gradisar. There are no city updates this evening. It was a quick week from last Monday.
Any questions or comments from council? Excellent. The next agenda item that we have is from the Humane Society. So do we have Ms. McGuire to the podium, please? And Director, would you mind saying your name for the record as well? And whenever you're ready, and then make sure that your mics are on as well. It's just the button on the little base.
Great. Thank you for having us today. So today, we're going to be sharing our year for 2021, looking at it as a review. We'd like to share a nice happy tale story about an animal that came through our care. It's always nice to do a staff spotlight, and we have that staff member here today. And then we're going to be discussing community engagement. And Dwayne will be covering our animal law enforcement update. So starting with the year in review.
Thank you. I wanted to explain that Lindsay would normally be here, but she had a family emergency, so she couldn't. So I offered to step in on her behalf. So I'm going to do the best I can with all this stuff, but take it easy on me, please. I didn't prepare this presentation, but I'm going to go through it. On the animal law enforcement side, we did see quite an increase in calls this past year. I apologize, but the percentages that are shown on there are actually not correct. Our total call number is correct, 13,555 calls. It was an increase of 10.9% over the previous year. Aggressive animal calls was up 9.9%. Cruelty cases, very concerning to us, 1,256 cruelty cases, which was a 20% increase over the prior year. And our cruelty responses, which is the total number of times we had to go out in order to get a situation resolved, was up by 30.5%.
For animal shelter services?
For animal sheltering services, we saw an increase in 28% of the animals that we received into our care at the Pueblo campus. We have the breakdown by species below. We also saw an increase 37% in adoptions in 2021 compared to 2020, a 15% increase in stray animals that came into our care that then were subsequently reunited with their owner, and a 33% increase of our volunteer hours, which we're very excited about. For public veterinary services, we saw, we also saw an increase there. We saw an increase all around, except for our wellness wagon services. So that's our mobile unit that goes into the public to offer public medical services. That was pretty, that was pretty consistent with 2020. Some pieces to highlight, our community cats that we were able to vaccinate and spay and neuter increased 8%, which is actually incredibly impressive because we didn't have a veterinarian for a pretty significant part of last year. A big important part that we wanted to talk to everyone here about is a lot of the veterinary shortages that we're seeing in Pueblo. We're seeing it nationwide with veterinary access to care for animals and veterinary shortages, but we're acutely seeing it in Pueblo. Currently, we're struggling with overnight care for animals that need emergency treatment from our animal law enforcement team. There's only one veterinary clinic that provides overnight care, and they're currently closed a few days a week. So we're forced to take animals to an emergency vet clinic that closes at, I believe, 10:00 PM, and then transport it up to Colorado Springs for emergency care. So that's been a big drain on our resources. Great. And then the other thing that I'd like to highlight is that the animals transferred to other organizations was up 29%. And a significant part of that is a transfer to our Colorado Springs location, where animals could receive more intensive treatment for ringworm, receive dentals. A lot of underage kittens go to our Colorado Springs location to receive foster. So we've really been grateful that we could leverage that location to be able to provide care for the animals in Pueblo. So here's our happy tale. Some of our city council members were able to come and visit and meet Whisper. She was a dog that came in as a stray. We were able to identify her owner, and while she was in care and we were looking for her owner, our veterinary team identified that she had a fracture for her leg. The owner reclaimed her, and our animal law enforcement team, this, this is just a great story about how all the different departments really work together for the well-being of the animals and also to provide care for the citizens of Pueblo. So this dog was reunited with its owner, and then our animal law enforcement team performed welfare checks to ensure that the dog was getting the necessary care it needed for its fractured leg. After a few visits, the owner realized that he couldn't, he had exhausted all options and said that, "I can't provide treatment for this dog." So he surrendered the dog to, to, to us, and our medical team was able to perform the surgery, and Whisper is now recovering and foster. For our staff member, we have Chelsea West Baxter, and she is here today if she can wave. So we'd like to highlight Chelsea because she's a, she's a native of Pueblo. She's been very invested in the Pueblo community her entire career. She's served on numerous boards and committees throughout her career. She loves the culture and history of Pueblo. She has a very strong dedication to Pueblo. And we've really, her position right now is really a community liaison to engage with the Pueblo community. And we have really, she has contributed so much to the Pueblo location and helping us to really get to know the different members in the, the community overall at Pueblo. And she's been with our organization since June of 2021. One other thing we'd like to highlight, this is a project from the whole team, really. The team came up with this idea that they wanted to be able to create resources leveraging local businesses in Pueblo. So the project is to engage with different businesses in Pueblo for different services. So the best example that I have is fence repairs. Our animal law enforcement team is constantly on the road. And oftentimes, when they reunite an animal with its owner, the issue is the fence. And it doesn't feel as good to say, "Can you please fix your fence, or you're going to get a citation." So what we're doing is we're working to partner with different local Pueblo businesses to create a list of organizations that would be willing to help with fence repairs. So this way, when we're in the community and we identify a need, we can be able to connect them directly to a Pueblo resource.
This is a great story I wanted to share with you. Sorry about that. A great story I wanted to share with you about our ALE team. We recently received, back in November of last year, I got a call about a ferret in someone's garage. When the team went out, they were able to catch the ferret, and they scanned the ferret, and it turned out that the ferret did have a microchip in it. And it was a black-footed ferret that was recently released by the Colorado Parks and Wildlife into the Walker Ranch in an effort for conservation. So this is a picture of our officers there with the Parks and Rec as they came out to reclaim their black-footed ferret. So. Couple other stories wanted to share with you about. And this first one, this is Officer Stephanie Dominguez and Brandon Skoll, along with Tasha Reed, who was in, was with our organization. She's now with Clayton Homes. They got together and with help from Clayton Homes, were able to, to get some funding together, to go out and purchase supplies to help with the homeless pet owners in the community. And so they were able to go out and purchase a bunch of supplies that were needed and take them and deliver them out into the community. The second story was in December, ALE team was called out to a cat collector house. The woman there had recently become unemployed, was really struggling. She, she had stated at the time that she was mentally suffering and was unable to care for the cats. And the team was able to come in, and we were able to gather up all the cats and take them to the shelter to get cared for and rehomed. But the team felt really bad for her and the conditions that she was in. So they stayed after a couple of hours. And this is pictures of our ALE officers, actually, Officer Skylar Sodello and Zach Gutierrez, helping the woman to clean up the apartment, to get her, at least make her feel a little bit better and get her started on the right foot. Looking ahead, we want to talk a little bit about some of the accomplishments of 2021, but also we want to look ahead at 2022. And first and foremost, I'd really like to thank all of you who came out to have lunch with us and tour the shelter here in Pueblo. Really appreciate that. It's good seeing you again. The accomplishments we did was a Pueblo municipal ordinance revision, over 700 ALE dedicated training hours, extended patrols, Pueblo representation at the AWAC conference, which is the Animal Welfare Association of Colorado Conference, annual conference. And in 2022, that's actually going to be held at Great Wolf Lodge up just north of Colorado Springs. So it'll make it even easier for more of our officers to attend. And several cases resolved in Pueblo Municipal Court and Pueblo Combined Courts. Looking ahead, we are looking at a county resolution that would mirror what's been, what's happened here in Pueblo City. We're looking to get more state certification for our new staff. We are certainly looking to recruit and retain more of our team, our ALE team and our shelter team. As an organization, we've been struggling, like everyone has, with staffing issues. So feel good that we've, we've got the right people now, if we can just hold on to them. So looking to, forward to getting more involved in community events with Chelsea's help. She's been instrumental in helping connect us to the community and building our relationships. And we are rolling out a responsible pet ownership education, which is something that the ALE team's looking at with the city courts. When someone has a minor infraction, you know, as opposed to them looking at a fine or something, having them take some type of a, of a class. The team's put together this, and we're working with the courts. And so we're looking forward to that as an alternative to, to punishment. You know, people are having trouble caring for their pets. They certainly don't need a fine on top of that. So if it can be something like you deal with, with driver education, you get a, first time you get a speeding ticket, you go learn all about why speeding is bad. So looking forward to seeing what the results of that are. And then we'll also be looking at things we can do to help and work in the community to try to lower some of this responses, as we talked about in the beginning. And those numbers I shared were Pueblo numbers, Pueblo City and County numbers. As an organization, we're seeing the same thing organizationally. You know, like 20% increase in cruelty calls and field calls, which is a problem for us. We want to see if there's things we can do to, to be proactive and, and reach out to the community and get these numbers down. Three minutes to spare.
And that's our presentation. We can, we can answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. What questions are there from council, Councilor Flores?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I'm looking on my iPad here for the month of February. And, and looking at it, it looks like it's normal. It's a normal February. And I'm wondering whether you feel that 2021 was really an anomaly. There's so many strange things that happened in 2021, whether it was family issues, mental health issues, that type of stuff. Are you seeing that maybe we're bouncing back to kind of a normal? Because those numbers were shocking to me, the ones that you brought up. And in the month of February, one of the things that I always look at is the save rate. And I, since I've been on council, this will be the beginning of my sixth year. We went through that period where you had a lot of activists around the United States that wanted us to be at that 90% save rate. And I can see by the February report, at least in that month, that we're right at almost 90%. They're 89.5, I think. And, and that's good news. But the question really has to do with whether or not you felt 2021 was an anomaly and that maybe with it being behind us, that maybe we can get back a little bit better results.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. Sorry, I'm not turning it off. Somebody's turning it off on me. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the question, sir. The 2020 was certainly an anomaly. 2021, I think, was more of a normal reflection of where the numbers were. And that's nationally, when you look at shelters across the country. HSPPR did not see the dramatic drop-off that many shelters across the country saw. I think primarily because we remained open throughout the pandemic and tried to keep business as much as usual as possible. But that being said, we still saw about a 6%, 7% drop-off in, in animals. So I would say 2021 would be more your normal. What is really, and yes, here in Pueblo, 2022 up through February, which we only have two months, so we're, we're not basing much yet. Organizationally, 2022 has been very odd, and we're, we're not trying to understand it. We're seeing significantly more animals in, and again, our, our territory covers everywhere from Centennial all the way through Pueblo. So we're covering a big area. But we certainly saw a significant increase in 2022, which is higher than numbers than we saw in going back to like 2017. Animal intake, strays and owner surrenders, I'm talking community animals, has been on a steady decrease year after year. Now, as I'm seeing this little tick-up, we're hoping it was just a fluke for a couple of months. But more time will tell.
My last question had to do with several, several years back, we did away with people that tied their, their dog out in the cold or whatever, and that we made some changes to our ordinances, which were fantastic. I think it's very rare to see an animal tied up anymore. It still happens, but not like it used to. It was kind of an everyday occurrence. Are there any, and maybe you can't answer this question tonight, but I'd like you to think about it. And that is, is there any other kinds of things that we can do as a city council to tighten up our ordinances to, to make it easier for you to do your job? And if there's things that you feel need modifying or amending or even starting from scratch on things that we can do to, you know, police, especially in the area of animal cruelty? And it's, it's, it's a big question here, but if you could think about that and let us know, I think, I think that's our responsibility as a city council and as a city. So think about that.
Thank you for that, and we will. And Lindsay will be the best person to answer that, and we'll have her prepared to answer that at the next meeting.
Mayor?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, the presentation where you had the adoptions, you had so many dogs, so many cats, and you had 186 others. What were the other, you adopt goldfish or turtles or what? I know you had the story about the ferret, but what other kind of adoptions do you do?
We can adopt out goldfish and turtles. Primarily, it's small animals, so mice, rabbits, guinea pigs, those sort of animals, and then also barnyard animals, so chickens, ducks. We just, we just worked with Boulder Humane Society to send them a dog, and they sent us two ducks. And they were adopted within 24 hours. So, so yes, so that's primarily the other animals are the barnyard animals and the smaller pocket pets. Yeah.
And they just surrender them to you, or?
Yeah.
If I could just feed on that, I pay attention to our statistics on our animal count, how much animals are in. And last week, well, week and a half ago, all of a sudden, I saw our numbers increase by 240. And I was like, what the heck? And it was all in the other category. It was goldfish. Somebody surrendered 200 goldfish to us. But an animal's an animal.
So if anyone's looking for goldfish on this council, I think we have plenty. Councilor Maestri?
So I have a constituent that she's got her feral cat situation. And I understand the whole feral cat thing because I had to do it myself about 15 years ago on one of my projects. The problem is, is with the seniors, they can't get down to get a cage, and then some of them can't carry the cage. Now, when I worked with the Feral Cat Society in the San Francisco Bay Area, they actually used to bring the cage out and trap the cats and then take them to have them fixed and then bring them back. Is there like a society different, other than yourselves, that works more closely in those situations? Or?
We're really committed to helping people and helping keeping pets with people. So our, our program can't facilitate that level of, you know, supplying cages and picking up cats and trapping cats on behalf of people. But on a case, on a one-off basis, we're, we're really committed to helping. So I would be happy to.
Is there a Feral Cat Society in this area that they can call? That does work with those things?
Not to my knowledge, but I can definitely look into that more. But we do have a dedicated TNR program. And I know that our community cat coordinator, her name's Sunny, she's very committed to, if someone's physically not able to trap cats and bring them, she'll help work with them.
Okay, and her name was?
Her name's Sunny. I can get you her contact info if you'd like.
Okay. All right, yeah, because I hear of the cat colonies and people taking care of cat colonies, but I don't know who they are. So they're not affiliated with you guys, and you guys don't know who they?
So our, our program, we, we have people who will take responsibility, and they will feed cats and also work to get them spayed and neutered through our program.
Okay.
So the colony managers are citizens of Pueblo. Then they work directly with us for the spay-neuter services.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. In a way, I just thought maybe, like I said, it was a society, Feral Cat Society, that I called and worked with, and I mean, because I had somewhere around 90 cats that I had to deal with at one time.
There are some in the Denver metro area, but I can definitely dig in further to see what would be available.
All righty.
Truthfully, we provide services, so I haven't had to kind of explore out of our organization.
Okay, all righty. Well, thank you.
Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I was a part of the tour that we went to, we went on a couple of weeks ago. It was phenomenal. It was a great educational experience. And one of the things that you all were talking about were community, like, education opportunities. Like, do you have any of those opportunities planned? Like, where you said you did something at the dog park? Or do you have anything planned like that for folks to be aware of? Or do you have like a request form or somewhere, somewhere, somewhere people can go, like, request that, like, at a, for a community event, things like that?
Yeah, to the, to the first part of the question about your, Lindsay sharing the experience at dog parks, I would have to defer to Lindsay to, to speak to that, but we can definitely get back to you on that point. But I think a request form is a great idea, and that's definitely something that Chelsea and I can champion to, to make accessible to people.
Okay, great, because I think some of those, some of these different community events that happen throughout the year would be, would be greatly, would be, would be a great opportunity for you all to help folks understand their pets better.
I agree.
Thank you.
Councilor Graham? Thank you, and thank you for everything you guys do for our community. How is the Wellness Center at the PetSmart going? Is that booming now, or?
It is going very well. It's still getting recognition and people figuring out about it. And thank you again for attending the ribbon cutting and coming to that. We're looking forward to expanding the services there, but right now, it's, it's open two days a week, Sundays and Mondays, for vaccinations and wellness exams for the community. And there are still opportunities, and they still have open, they're taking people as they walk in and stuff. So it's going very well, but still growing, getting his feet under it.
Councilor Attentio?
Well, thank you for what you do. Since you have taken over this Pueblo's services, it's been top-notch ever since you took over. I was on council when you did, and since then, it's been nothing but good. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Councilor Warner, do you have any questions or comments for the Humane Society?
I do, I do. Hey, I just wanted to thank you for that presentation. I'm a big fan of HSPPR and took a hard stance back when PAAS was trying to take the contract. But just wanted to thank you for the presentation. It's also really disheartening that there's no shortage of cruelty to animals, which is really, just breaks my heart. I do like to see that 37% adoption rate going up, which obviously you're doing something really well there. So anyway, just thanks for everything.
Thank you.
I was one of the other counselors who did the tour, and I nearly left with five animals after that. So thank you all for what you do. I'm curious about the average days to, of pets in the shelter. Can you tell, tell us a little bit about how long the duration of an animal is in the shelter? And if someone would want to adopt, how would they go about that?
So I can get you the specific statistics for the average length of stay. I can tell you roughly, but I'd rather get you the specific statistics, if that's all right. For adoption, we have an open adoption policy. So anyone who would like to adopt an animal can come down, they can meet with them to see if it's any, you know, get to, get a feel for the animal. But from there, we have an adoption contract, and we get them set up with a license, a Pueblo license, and they can go home that day.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from council? Well, thank you so much for your time. And we still look forward to hearing the 2022 update in about a year. So thank you for those at the Humane Society for everything that you do.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, our next agenda item is around a Pueblo school readiness plan. So do we have Ms. Shehorn and Mr. Guy to the podium, please? And Ms. Shehorn and Mr. Guy, whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. I will call your attention to the folders that were handed out to you. On the left side, you'll see at the very back, the Pueblo School Readiness Calendar. Next, you'll see a little advertisement about our just recently launched Children First Chatter podcast. And then you'll see the Youth and Family Resource Guide. We do have thousands of these available. They're available free of charge. So if you know anyone who's needing resource guides, have them contact our office. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see an executive summary of our report. So why did we develop the school readiness plan? First of all, we were hearing from so many people that they believe school readiness started at age three. And those of us in early childhood know, school readiness starts prenatally. We need to prepare children from the moment that you know that you are pregnant. You need to start preparing your child to be school-ready. The availability and affordability of quality childcare in Pueblo, we know, is extremely difficult to find. We are working on that issue. However, this is really a whole community issue, not just our office issue, especially those hours that are the off-hours and off-days, so evenings and weekends, often overnight care are the most difficult to find. We also know that the process that providers have to go through is often disjointed. The coordination alignment absolutely needs to be improved. So there's many silos, and there's a lot of duplication of efforts. We also know that there's a set of disjointed programs within the community as well as within the state for those wanting to be a licensed provider. So navigating it is a challenge, and many different requirements that don't always align proves to be a big barrier.
So this was not something that Angie and I dreamed up together one day over coffee. We talked to over 100 different individuals, whether it be parents, caregivers, early childhood providers, local leaders, state and local leaders, state and national leaders, state government agencies, local government agencies, and some of the friendly faces you see on that slide, whom you probably know very well. We talked to these folks and asked questions about what was important to them about early childhood. What does it mean for them to see that children are ready to thrive in school? And that means all the way through early elementary, not just from the age of three on. This is very important to know, we talked to both experts, who are the local parents, they're experts, and talking to those who've done research on this work. So what we did is we came up with, based on these interviews, based on the national research, we have developed a comprehensive and holistic school readiness plan. So this is not a plan that is focused specifically on ABCs, but it looks at accelerating investment in the community, specific to getting our community, our children, our families, our agencies ready to be able to help our children succeed in school and in life long-term. That means we're centering the needs of the family first. They come first. That's why we talked to them. Most importantly, wanted to hear what they had to say about this. They often are left out in these planning opportunities and we made sure that families were heard in this process. We also, also look to incorporate a strategic plan to this. So it's not just an idea, but it's a strategic plan that begins with a five-year look at what we're going to be doing. But it's not a five-year solution. It's going to take more than that to get to where we need to be. This is our first effort in this work.
And Pueblo is really in the forefront of this work. Some of the examples that shows that Pueblo's in the forefront is our referral system. So a little over a year ago, Pueblo decided that we were going to take control over, take back control of the childcare referrals. Up in twenty fifteen, the state decided to centralize that in a Denver call center that wasn't working for our community. So like I said, a little over a year ago, we took that control back. And since we've launched it in January of last year, we have over seventeen hundred families who has used, who, who have used that referral system. And the end of February, we expanded it to include the eleven counties in the southeast Colorado region. Another example is our mobile childcare for recovery patients. So parents who are seeking addiction recovery or mental health supports, we now will have in place a resource to help them with onsite mobile childcare at the facility where they're receiving their treatment. Pueblo is also a national leader. We are often contacted to speak about some of the things that we have been doing and been very successful at. And then with the creation of the Colorado Department of Early Childhood, the landscape of early childhood is going to be changing drastically. We will be having a presentation from the transition team from the governor's office at our Early Childhood Council meeting on April twenty-fifth. I'll send the invite. I enjoy, I encourage you to attend and ask questions to hear more information about the new department.
So what is this plan? Why do we, why did, why do we put this together in a way that seems to be a little different than the usual kind of community plan? We wanted to create a roadmap and a roadmap for investment in the community. And that means investing in our children and our families and our caregivers, because we know in Pueblo, it's not just mom and dad. It's grandma, grandpa, great-grandma, great-grandpa, tio, tia, the person down the street. It's really truly is a village. It's a Pueblo raising our children and we need to invest in those, that larger caregiver group, as well as our early childhood sector, as well as looking at educational initiatives that we can bring and honestly, the whole community. This is really about us investing in our future by investing now in what we do. It's designed to build a system. It's not a little program. This is looking at the entire system so that we can lift all of our children into that place where they're ready for school and they're going to survive and they're going to thrive within our schools. And the idea of this is, this plan is, if you like bubbles, if you have anyone who's under the age of four anywhere near you and you offer them a little bubble, the little bubble jar, they're going to blow bubbles. And when you look at those bubbles, sometimes they, they connect together and they bring this big bubble. And if you see the look on a three-year-old or a four-year-old or a two-year-old's face, or sometimes a fifty-two-year-old's face, when they're looking at these and going, wow, look at all this thing come together in this amazing thing that happens. That's what the vision of this plan is, is that we're looking to reach the full potential for every child and every family in this community by giving them the best access to care, the best quality care, by having the community ready to support them, to make sure our families are flourishing. That means they're having that great opportunity to feel good about themselves, to feel good about living here and really have those successful opportunities in Pueblo. And to make sure our children grow up healthy, that sometimes is, sometimes flies under the radar as an important piece. But our children need to be healthy to be able to be school-ready. And so, and you'll see this also in the executive summary that's in your packet. We have created four investment areas to reach our goal of this full potential flourishing child. And those four areas include looking at how we're getting families connected to the early childhood network, whether that's preschools, early care, preschools that's provided by Head Start or school districts, whatever that connection is, at the right time, at the right place to meet family needs. We're also wanting to make sure our families are thriving. So connecting to things that already exist in our community, like creating high-paying, good, long-term jobs. Making sure families can connect with each other, which is one of the big things our families said that they really want is the opportunity to connect with each other and create a community. Also needing investment is healthy families. So everything from prenatal work, preventative care, physical and mental health for the child and for their caregivers. One of the things we see that's most, that happens most often for children, early and young children is that they miss school because of dental issues. So that idea of preventative care is really key to this. And also making sure that the community is able to respond, not just setting things up that the families can do or that early childhood can do, but the whole, how the whole community can support what's going on in promoting the wellbeing of our young children.
And these are really identified areas to invest to begin to address those gaps. We know there's gaps out there that we're not yet aware of. That's why parent voice is so important to tell us what those barriers are. Those providers to tell us what those struggles are when they're navigating those systems. We know we have a lot of work to do and we have some great successes. One of the successes I want to point out tonight is we have three licensed childcare programs in Pueblo that have reached the highest level of quality available in the state of Colorado. That's Eastside Childcare Center, Life Center Academy, and Julie Medina's Home Childcare Program in Pueblo West.
This again is not something willy-nilly that we've come up with. We have looked at a lot of data and we're going to have to continue to collect data from a variety of sources to make sure that the investments that are made in the community are having the right impact and the most impact amongst where the investments are being made. So that means we're going to have to have a robust data system, looking and analyzing at that data and evaluating that data to see where we can fill in gaps or where we can continue successes that already exist in the community. There are a lot of great things already happening in early childhood in Pueblo. And that's why we're looked at as a national leader. And now it's time for us to take the next staff, next step on that. Now, we do have specific detailed measures that we will be tracking as part of this. But the idea is to make sure we collect the data and use it.
So Pueblo Early Childhood Council generated this report, but the report doesn't belong to us. It belongs to every citizen of the community. And it's going to take every citizen of the community to work on reaching those outcomes in that, in the detailed plan. We all own this school readiness plan. Early childhood and school readiness is everyone's responsibility. Every sector that we have here on this slide has a role to play in ensuring that Pueblo has ready children, ready families, ready schools, and that Pueblo is a ready community.
That ends our presentation. Thank you. Love to hear any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Guy and Ms. Shehorn. What questions are there from council? Counselor Flores.
I served on the school board in the nineties and I got to tell you, one of the disappointments that I see in our school district is when they eliminated Friday. And it's ironic that we're talking about early childhood care, I guess, or a focus on early childhood education. And couple that with the welfare of the child on a Friday. What, what do you, how, what, how do you react to the fact that our whole system in the United States, the culture was really that mom and dad could work Monday through Friday? And now, you know, they have to go get childcare for that Friday. And you sometimes wonder where the children are doing on that Friday. What, what, have you delved into this issue? And it, it, to me, it always became an issue of another, as a benefit to the teacher and not so much for the child. And I'm really concerned, I've been concerned about that because it just was initiated probably three or four years ago. Do you have any comment on that?
Well, I do know that we do have some childcare programs that do provide a vast amount of school-aged childcare on Fridays. But by no means do we have enough licensed programs to meet the need for all of those school-aged children when school is not in session. And I do know that oftentimes a four-day work week is a way to attract additional workforce in a struggling economy now with education in general, early childhood all the way up through K-12. It's challenging to get people to take those open positions. And I know that there has been discussion that that four-day work week is one of those ways that they can attract additional workforce. But I too wonder, where are the children? If they're not in licensed care and their parents are working, where are the children?
That could become part of your collection of data and statistics. We're going to initiate a dashboard within the city. And included in that is going to be a lot of economic information, but I could also see maybe some of your data being put into this dashboard. So I'd like to continue talking to you about that.
We would be happy to do that. We think because this idea is no longer just about the academic, but the, the whole child and the whole family, that the interplay of many levels and many sources of data are going to be necessary for us to take a look at that whole picture, not just one particular point in time. Absolutely. We'd can, love to continue talking with you.
Thank you.
Counselor Atencio.
I bring this up every time I speak, somebody comes up to speak about education and dyslexia. And I have a grandson that was severely dyslexic. And if it wasn't for my grand, my daughter threatening District sixty with everything, that they came kicking and screaming, offering some sort of, of programs to help him, which was inadequate as far as the district is concerned, as far as we were concerned, she had to have outside help to get, to help him. We found out twenty percent, about twenty percent of the kids out there have dyslexia. And one of the problems is that when they aren't able to read, they end up at the back of the room and they become problem children and they become problem in every, educationally, behaviorally, everything. And then they become the worst parts of our society, basically. Do you have anything in this program that might identify dyslexia, first in the children? But second, teachings District sixty and educators how to find this problem and deal with it? Because we can solve a lot of problems in this society, because I, I truly believe that these kids that are sent to the back of the room because they're, they become problem children. And it's only because they can't read.
Counselor Atencio, you've reached a problem that is very close to me, because my son has multiple learning challenges and is neurodiverse. And one of the things we are looking at investing in is idea of neurodiversity. Not everybody's wired the same way. And starting that as early as possible is a great investment for us. We've started doing some of that work already in Pueblo through some of the work we've looked at and accomplished, I would say, very successfully in a program that lasted about five years in this community, where we looked at the social and emotional development of children, very different than what we traditionally look at. And we've had quite a bit of success. And in the long term, one of the things to invest in is this early identification and early resourcing for children to help them come over that. So you hit something that is, that is very closely.
Good. I'm glad to hear it, because, I mean, my grandson, he's, he's really a smart kid. He can talk on subjects that most of us have no idea. And he did it all visually, you know, and I mean, he's really a smart kid. But what, what would have happened to him if he didn't have a mother that didn't force the district to, to help him out? And they did come screaming and kicking and screaming, I mean, believe me.
And we've done a lot of work in the last few years to make sure that children, regardless of what income their family is, have access to early childhood development screenings. And then making sure that we have that system set up to where we don't lose children in the cracks. So they get that child development, the assessment done on their development. If there's any red flags, we make sure that we have people who are doing the surveillance to make sure that they're going from the assessment to receive the services that they need. And if they're not receiving the services, well, then we have advocates advocating for those services that those children need to be successful, regardless of where they're at.
I might add.
Teach the teachers.
If I might add one more thing, it's also educating the parents. As, as I, I will be open and honest that when my child was first, my son was first diagnosed by a teacher who did a magnificent job, we were in denial. And I am part of this world. So I think it's not just identification and providing resources, it's helping those parents to say, so your, so your child's wired a little differently. You know what? That's okay. And actually, they're probably pretty smart and will talk to us on things we've never heard of before. So absolutely.
Counselor Maestri.
Yes, even the advanced children, when they're finished with their work and the rest of the classes catching up, they're usually sent to the back of the room because they've already started talking. So it's like a no-win situation for these kids. And it's really hard for, you know, the kids to socialize and get along and everybody be kind of equal. And I, it, it surprises me that it's taking a program outside of the school district, because you guys aren't part of District sixty or seventy, that recognizes this and has to put things in place. When we don't have that within the school district, within the teachers, I know teachers and I'll go to their house to visit and they'll like redlining check after check after, I'm like, whoa, wait a second. Oh, well, doesn't that concern you? Oh, no, we just have to pass, we pass them anyways to the next grade. That's how they're designed to do that. And I thought to myself, well, then why even check it in red? Because now you're passing out papers back to these kids and one's got a page full of red, I mean, it's heartbreaking. It's, how do you, how does somebody have any self-esteem and self-confidence and everything to try to move forward in life when they're just checking the papers in red and not trying to correct that or help with that? Administer, and they're, and they're teachers within our district. And so.
Well, and I think that the Early Childhood Council and the Children First Department at Public Community College are really focusing on the whole child. We know that there is so much that makes up a child, where the school districts focus mostly on academics. But before that child can get to that academic level, there is so much more that we have to make sure that we as a community are doing successfully, so that when they reach that academic piece, they can do that successfully as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I just want to say, this resource guide that you all put together is phenomenal. You know, as a community organizer, it's really difficult to find a good, up-to-date resource guide. And this family resource guide is probably something that each of us council folks should carry with us to help fill just so many easy questions. I mean, let alone police officers, DSS folks probably have this in their mind, in their brain already. But where do you all distribute these at?
We print about twenty-five thousand of those a year and by the end of the year, they're all gone. We've been doing that for many years, but we distribute them to anyone and everyone who wants those resource guides. Department of Human Services, it's, we have a revolving door. They can pick them up all the time. But yes, absolutely, we want to make sure that people know that this is available to them. And I appreciate you saying it's updated, because we feel like it's out of date as soon as we print the first one, because things change so quickly. But this is a great thing to give to some. because things change so quickly. But this is a great thing to give to someone rather than saying, go to this website or call this number, hand that to them and they have those resources right there at hand.
One hundred percent. And I guess just a couple of, just a suggestion, maybe District sixty partnering with them to help distribute these to every student, or to make sure every family gets them. Or even just places like the bus station where folks are congregating that, where folks may need that information, but just don't know where exactly to get it. And these are very colorful and they're easy to read and very well put together. Thank you guys so much.
Ms. Solano.
Thank you very much. The Mayor's Youth Council, as young as they are, last year requested a hundred and twenty-five of them and included them in each of the homeless, their homeless peers at high school in the backpacks before they went back to school. And they asked for another hundred and twenty-five. But I do know that you do partner with the school district administration. And there are four hundred and thirty-some students that are, meet the criteria for homeless youth within the School District sixty that the Mayor's Youth Council brought to our attention. But if I could have another one hundred and twenty-five of them, the youth, the youth are the one distributing them.
Absolutely. We'll get those to you. Thank you.
Counselor Winner, do you have anything? Questions or comments?
Um, I guess I just have a comment. First of all, thank you for that presentation. You know, every organization that travels to a third-world country to help out a poverty situation, the very first thing they address is educating women as far as birth control. You know, it's, I, I would just like to see more of that going on. You know, the number way, number one way out of poverty in a lot of these cases is to have less children. And I would say in Pueblo, probably our biggest poverty group is single women with children. So what are your thoughts on that? I mean, we're, we're doing it for other countries, but we don't seem to be doing it for our own.
One of the things that, and the data does, the research does show, that it is most likely for a child of a single mother to grow up in poverty and struggle. That is true. That data does show that. I would say, and I was involved with some of the initial community health plans put together by the Pueblo Department of Public Health and Environment, and the amount of reduced teen pregnancies in this community is phenomenal. As a matter of fact, we've been nationally recognized through a number of groups on that work. So it's obviously work that has gone on, been successful, but needs to continue even more. And it's an intertwined process with job creation, education, it's family strengthening, there's a whole bunch of other things that go into.
Family, family planning.
Family planning. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much, Mr. Guy. Thank you, Ms. Shehorn. And we will definitely follow up on some of the things that we talked about during the discussion. So thank you so much.
And I encourage you to check out our new podcast.
I, Ms. Shehorn will actually be back to a work session on April eighteenth. The mobile childcare unit that she spoke about, she's actually going to bring it to us so we can walk through it. And I think it'll, so we'll see you then, Ms. Shehorn. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and or instructing negotiations under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes to instruct negotiations regarding collective bargaining agreements.
Counselor Tencio, seconds. All those in favor, aye? All those opposed, nay? The motion, uh, mayor, sorry.
I just want to advise everybody, we're going to have to leave the microphones on. Otherwise, Counselor Winner won't be able to hear us and we won't be able to hear her. So we'll just have them clear the foyer out there. There's a speaker out there. But if we make sure that nobody's out there, we should be okay. So.
So Counselor Winner, I think we're going to just remain in here, you know, as usual, and we'll just see on the screen.
Okay, sounds good.